Welcome. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, June 27, 2022. I'm Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
John Hurt?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Eric Hellman?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Doug Heim?
Yes.
Ashley Meyer?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with an act signed into law on February 15, 2022, that extends certain COVID-19 measures. The act includes an extension until July 15, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The governor's order, which is on the town's website, in reference with the agenda materials for this meeting, allow public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as there is reasonable public access that allows the public to follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and it's also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials, also found on the town's website, using the Notice Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's set forth on tonight's agenda. I'll now turn to the next item on the agenda, which is the endorsement of appropriation of access and deficiency funds for Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District. Mr. Heim?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This request is a fairly straightforward one. We've received these several times in the last couple of years. So I wouldn't say it's every year, but it's a fairly standard practice. Minuteman has an excess after closing out the fiscal year, and they like to roll that into their capital stabilization fund, which is largely a benefit to all communities. Because as a member of the Minuteman Agreement, we all are responsible, the member communities are responsible for capital expenditures. This is basically taking, operating, putting into capital. I think Superintendent Will Coon was, just so folks at home know, happy to come talk about it, but it's again a fairly straightforward practice unless the board has any questions. We're just basically looking for a motion to approve the appropriation of the excess and deficiency funds into the capital stabilization fund. Thank you.
Mr. Hurt?
Move approval?
Second with a question.
Ms. Mahan?
Am I correct, either Attorney Heim or Mr. DeCoursey, of the 1.4, about $500,000 is from Arlington's pot? Or the 1.4 is what the excess is declared to be? That's from all the members, that 1.4 is a compilation of all the member communities? And my question is, is Arlington's contribution or share of that approximately 500,000?
So my understanding from, again, Mr. Poole, the manager's memo, is that the endorsement recommendation before us is for the $500,000, the excess and efficiency? I don't, I'm not quite familiar enough to know exactly where the other funds referenced by Minuteman are coming from. I'm assuming that's correct, Mrs. Mahan, but I'm not 100% sure. I don't know if Mr. DeCoursey has better information on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so the 1.4, if this was the operating budget and you were making an appropriation, we would be between like 30 and 33% of the annual budget.
I'm not sure because of, over time, the excess and deficiency is a historical amount that goes back many years, so they don't necessarily trace it to each individual community. But the 500,000 that is coming out, again, if it was an appropriation, we'd be about a third of it.
Okay. And does anyone remember historically when the last time this particular scenario played itself out? The reason I say that is, we're going to have to start to, in '23 or '24, demonstrate to the voters, regardless of how they feel, about an override. And we're going to have to explain that we've looked under, you know, every mattress, every pillow, every, everything. And I'm fine with this appropriation, but I know it said it's been done before, but this is the first time I can recall having an overage or this particular designation of money, which is being asked to go into capital planning projects, which is fine this one time, I guess. But, you know, as we move forward, where we're going to have to start to buckle down. So when was, I don't remember, do you remember the last time this happened? I don't ever remember doing this before. And where they have a brand-new school. And I understand, and I don't want to rock the boat, I'm fine with, you know, I guess, actually, I'd be guided by Mr. DeCoursey, but I guess I would say, if this came up again next year, I think I would like to look at it a little more studiously in terms of whether it's something that we need to do again. You know, I'm fine with this initial, do you have any thoughts on, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, this is like taking money out of free cash from the town. So in theory, by taking the amount out of the excess and deficiency fund, that is lessening our burden, because otherwise it would come out as part of our annual assessment. So I'm not sure they did this that much in the past, because I'm not sure how robust the excess and deficiency fund was over the years. But I think it's appropriate to ask if it does come again. The other question would be, could they be using the funds for a different purpose? That you might be more appropriate. But I think for this year, knowing that they want to improve the playing fields there, knowing that they have this amount certified, and they'll lose that certification on June 30th, I'm comfortable with it, but I agree with the follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think I second it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-on question to that. Does this, are they not able to use this surplus for operating expenses in a way that would also reduce our obligation?
Okay. So technically, what they're doing here is they're amending their fiscal '22 budget to take $500,000 and increase the contribution to their capital stabilization fund. So everything else is already paid for through the approval of the budget. And again, because it happened in this fiscal year, they just voted this a week ago, and they have to go to the member communities and have them endorse this within seven days. So it's, there's no need within their budget for fiscal '22 for any other purpose.
Thank you.
And it just so happened that we conveniently had a meeting within that amount of time. So, yes, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Chair, for me, I just want to clarify and correct one thing. So one reason that there may be a slight difference here is that, and I'm sorry I didn't raise this earlier, is that as folks will recall, members will recall, we did amend the agreement. So I don't recall how excess was handled before we amended the Minuteman Regional Agreement. Part of what the purpose of that amendment was, was to provide communities with greater voice in terms of how certain expenditures and responsibilities were handled. So I think that's true, meaning to your point, Mrs. Mahan. And then, I'm sorry, I think Mr. DeCoursey said this, but I did want to clarify that I do believe that 500,000 is a total of what they're seeking, not $500,000 from Arlington. Are we on the same page with Mr. DeCoursey? So I'm sorry, I misspoke about that, that's my fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're all set here. So on a motion to endorse the appropriation of excess and efficiency funds for Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District by Mr. Hurt and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. So on to the third item on the agenda, reopening a Native American gallery event at Whittmore Park. And do we have Jerry Tremley here?
Yes, she's being promoted.
Am I visible? No?
You have to start your video.
I know, I pressed it and it didn't, it didn't click on for me. How's that?
Yeah, great, great.
Okay.
Thank you. So thanks for joining us, Ms. Tremley. Do you want to tell us more about the event?
Yes. My request is to reserve Whittmore Park. And what I should have told you is, I'm one of the directors of the Cyrus Gallin Art Museum. And we're having a reopening of one of our galleries, the Native American Gallery, because we were very fortunate and received grant money to give that gallery a facelift. And we want to have, we want to have a reopening. And we're planning it for Sunday, August 7. And we're requesting the time 12 to 8 for use of the park, because we'd like to set up, we need to have the event, we want to clean up. We intend to invite about 60 people. Of course, we don't know how many will accept that, but probably 30 to 40 people. And we'll have, the museum's going to be open for its regular hours, which are 12 to 4:00, but we'll have remarks at 1:00 p.m. And I anticipate we will have two to three tables for refreshments, for maybe cookies, cupcakes, beverages. There'll be no alcoholic drinks provided, and we may have a few chairs around the outside of the, of, well, outside, around the park for our guests. But we can't get 60 people into the museum at one time, so we anticipated the remarks would be on the steps, and then people could go in and out at their leisure. And as I said, they can have some refreshments.
All right, great. Move approval? Second by Mr. Hellman. So any questions, comments? Well, it sounds like it's going to be a fun event. And so good luck with everything. And so on, a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Hellman, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
So on to the consent agenda. So for, number four is for approval, 4th of July banners by Beth Lockyer, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. Number five is a request, a contractor drain layer license by Primo Paving. Six is reappointments. All terms expire on June 30, 2025. Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, Augusta Hadock, Arif Padaria of the Cemetery Commission, Michelle Hostler of the Conservation Commission, Nathaniel Stevens, Council on Aging, Patricia Bellio, and for the Equal Opportunity Advisor Committee, Samantha Dutra, Human Rights Commission, Rajiv Sinaja, Library Trust of Trustees, I'm sorry, Library Board of Trustees, Jonathan Gates, and Open Space Committee, Anne Leroy, and David White. And the seventh item is amendments of the May 26, 2022 meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All right. So on move to approve, consent agenda by Mr. DeCoursey, a second by Mr. Hurt, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Moving along on appointments. Item number eight, Arlington Historic District Commission Architect-at-Large, Brian LeBau. Hello, Mrs. LeBau.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thanks for joining us. And so, want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I've lived in Arlington for 18 years. I live in Arlington Heights on Aberdeen Road. And I'm an architect, obviously, and I've always been interested in historic structures and preserving them and town planning. And just, I'm very excited to be given the opportunity to serve on the Historic Commission. And I look forward to fulfilling that role. I should add that I don't live in a historic district, but my, the house I live in on Aberdeen Road is listed on the town roster of historic houses that were selected, I think, in 1976. So it's an older house that is an example of the shingle style that was deemed noteworthy back then.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? More colleagues? Move approval?
Second.
I'll take it from Mrs. Mahan. So any comments, questions? So was, is it a, I don't think it's a requirement, is it that you have to live in a historic district to be? All right, I didn't think so either, you know. So I was just kind of curious as to why you mentioned that, you know. And I do want to point out that I am impressed, I mean, that you worked on Memorial Hall. And that, that was a big project, you know, so congratulations on that.
Yes, thank you. Well, in fact, the part that I worked on included the lower level, which we called locker commons back then, which was sort of a student space with study space, and they had a food court down there. And unfortunately, that's all been now renovated, it doesn't look the way it did anymore. But, but it was a very, very interesting project. And it was a lot of fun going through the whole building and seeing in its original state, where we started to work on it.
Yeah, yeah, and the Museum of Contemporary Art in San Diego, I mean, just did some impressive things. So we're very fortunate to have you with us here in Arlington, I mean, not only on the commission, but also residents. So do you want to say something, Mr. Hellman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. We're, Arlington is very fortunate to have your talents and your time, so we appreciate you stepping up to serve. The one thing I just wanted to offer for your consideration as you join the commission as a new member, is that some residents, and I think there was a resolution at town meeting not long ago, asked the commission to try to do what they could when it came to being flexible with things like solar panels and other energy-efficient installations with that, with regard to historic standards. I think that, you know, there's obviously some competing needs that need to be balanced with the standards, but also with energy efficiency. And the town, and I think, you know, certainly, the government is very committed to energy efficiency, so that would be something that I would urge you to look into and to think about in your role.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Heim?
Just, Mr. Chair, just for everyone's information, I think part of the reason Mr. LeBau described the fact that he's not a resident of a historic district is just for people's edification. Every historic district is technically a separate commission, and they preside over a particular application in the historic district. One member of a commission has to be a resident of a district where they're hearing an application. So we have at-large members, like Mr. LeBau, who could serve in any district, but just so people know, anytime there's an application in a historic district, at least one member has to be a resident or a property owner of that district.
Right, thank you. Because, I mean, I just had the sense that that comment wasn't just a throwaway, so I appreciate that.
Sure, it's an at-large membership, Mr. Chair.
Great, great, and thanks. So on a vote to approve the appointment, I'm sorry, on a motion to approve the appointment by Mr. Hurt and a second by Mrs. Mahan, and Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Corsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So moving on, number nine, on the licenses and permits, we have for approval, wine and malt license for a prep neighborhood kitchen, 1367 Mass Ave, Mr. Daniel LaPerfido?
I have to accept my apologies. I've been technically unable to fix my video here, even though it's, I'm looking at a little camera, but it doesn't want to show my face.
That's okay, that's okay. And there are so many ways I could have messed up your name, so what's the proper way to pronounce your last name?
Oh, my goodness, it's Daniel LaPerfido.
Okay, yeah, you know, that was the last one I thought of, I mean, and it was like, all right, good, good. So LaPerfido, thank you. And thank you for wanting to business with us. You know, do you want to tell us a little bit about your place?
Yeah, so we've been open for about six months now. We got officially going in November. You know, and with the pandemic and everything else, it was, it's been a little crazy as a small business, but we've been getting some great feedback from the community, and we're working hard to, you know, make everyone happy around us. And we're trying to grow organically, and, you know, when we started, we didn't really know if beer and wine was a direction we needed to go in. But we've had really a lot of demand from our guests, and I think for the long-term health of the business, the ability to bring that on would just help us fill our little bit of seating that we have in here. It's just 19 seats, it's a couple of tables, but for our regular revenue, having people come in and use us as a destination instead of just takeout would really change the dynamic for us in the long term.
Okay, great, thank you. And so, return to my colleagues, Mr. Hellman?
Like to move approval?
And?
Second.
By Mrs. Corsey, any questions, comments? Mr. Hellman?
I just want to vouch for the quality of the establishment. I'm one of this prep's frequent customers and have been delighted at the quality of the food and the service, and I'm very happy that it's going well, and very happy to support this motion.
Mrs. Mahan?
I would echo Mr. Hellman's remarks. I've also read some really good reviews on your establishment, Prep Neighborhood Kitchen, since you opened. And since there is, this is a wine and malt license request, who are you designating to oversee and serve the alcohol beverages when appropriate?
On a day-to-day basis, it'll be myself who's in charge as well, as it continues to be owner-operated business, or my main business partner, John Casino, who's, we're both TIPS certified, and it'll be served from the counter, where we'll take the order, we can ID there, and we'll bring it over to the table for service.
Awesome. You answered, excuse me, you answered my second question. It may have been in your application, I didn't see it, but you both are TIPS certified, which is, is great. And as one of my previous colleagues, Mr. Dunn, would always speak up at this particular moment and say, just remind everybody that Arlington is very vigorous in terms of going into the establishments and just doing random spot checks to make sure it's in compliance. And pretty much close to 100% of the time when there's been a violation, it's when the owner-operator manager's plan has deviated, and it's, you know, somebody called in, short-staffed, you did something out of the norm, and that's when the violation occurs. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I've managed liquor licenses for hotels and fine dining for many years, and we have absolutely no intention of turning this into, you know, a bar atmosphere. So we'll make sure to keep it nice and tidy and with our limited services, really hoping to drive, you know, the food sales here.
No, and I know you'll do a great job carrying it with their offerings, because everything else you've done has certainly been superb. So thank you for answering those questions, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that, Mrs. Mahan. So anything else? Great. And so on, a motion to approve the license by Mr. Hellman and a second by Mrs. DeCoursey, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Congratulations, thank you, and good luck with the license and the continued business.
Thank you so much.
So moving on, number 10, for approval, Class II license, Eli Service Center, 125
Hello, I'm visible? Elias?
No, you're not.
Just a moment, please.
Okay, no problem.
How about now?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you.
Can you help, can you help me out with your last name?
Alcooli.
Okay, thank you. Alcooli, Mr. Alcooli?
Thank you.
So you want to tell us a bit about the business and the desire for the license?
Well, the business is, it's existing on 125 Broadway, Arlington. It is a service station with gasoline pumps, and we've been operating that business and own the property for almost like 15 years. We bought it from the old owner, Tom Porter, which is, he used to have the Class II license, dealer license. So the reason we asking for it, because we have a lot of customers that come and they ask, and also neighbors, they asking us if we have used cars to sell. I said, no, but there's something we can look into. And it is existing license there. I said, why not? Let me go try it, see if we can get it approved, so we can proceed with that procedure, selling cars on the lot with all the legal documents, instead of doing it on the side with illegally. And here we are, this is why I went to the town hall, and I found out Tom Porter, the old owner, is still applying for it, and he's still using it. I said, surprise, he shouldn't be done, he should be doing that. So I asked to stop Tom Porter from using the license, and I applied for it last week.
Great, all right.
And that's it.
Well, hopefully, we're moving fast enough, so Mr. Hurt?
I would just say, I agree, it's always better to do things legally than illegally. With that, I'll move approval.
And most, most to approve by Mr. Hurt?
Second, one question.
So a second by Mrs. Mahan, and a question for Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and I see for the Class II license that you'll be open six days a week, but closed on Sundays, but the gas station is open seven days a week?
The gas pumps is open seven days a week, the repair is open six days a week, and yes, exactly.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that was your intention. So Monday through Saturday, closed on Sunday for the Class II, but not for the gas?
No.
Okay.
The gas, seven days, the shop is seven, is six days, and whoever's going to sell the cars, or we have to be there, the gas attendant has no business or is not qualified to do those kind of paperwork and run this kind of business. So it'll be only six days a week.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, no problem. Anything else? Okay, so on a motion to approve by Mr. Hurt and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Take care. Moving on, item 11, for approval, outdoor restaurant and retail permit application, Fusion Taste, 303 Broadway, Su Ying Zhang.
If I could, I would just ask if you are representing them, if you could just raise
I see anyone?
I don't see anyone with their raised, their hand raised.
Yeah, I've lost my connection, so I can't see what's going on in there. You know, I feel kind of isolated, interestingly enough. Okay, well, you know, we will put it on the agenda for the next time, right? Or, I mean, or, Mr. Heim, you can give some guidance. Or, you're going to say, Ms. Mahan?
If I could, they're just a standard outside annual permit for April through November.
Okay.
All of the paperwork's attached, if the board is inclined.
Okay.
That would be.
Move approval?
Second.
Well, we're going to zip right through this one unless someone has a comment. Yeah, I will say, I mean, they have some good roles there, you know.
I mean, it's the same setup as last year, too.
Yeah, all right.
I'm very familiar with Fusion Taste, so I can vouch for them as well.
Yeah, the Arlington role is.
Next dinner on Mr. Hurt Fusion Taste.
Okay, so, so in my yakking there, so the motion was by Mr. Hurt? Okay, so, um, so, in my yakking there, so, the, the motion was by Mr. Hurd and the second by Mrs. Mahan?
Um, Mrs. Mahan.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll second Mr. Hurd's motion. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yep.
Mr. DeCourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Okay, so, moving on to open forum, accepting unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. So, I can't see, I can't see what's going on. So, do we have any hands raised?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time, no.
Okay, great. Uh, so, moving on, traffic rules in order of the business, number 12, discussion, Elway Brook, with Mrs. Mahan, and then Gwen Spieth and Kristen Anderson?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it's actually, uh, two agenda items under Elway Brook, which I had emailed, um, the DCR component of it about two weeks ago to my colleagues and spoke with then-town manager, Mr. Chapdeline. And then the second part, um, and Ms. Spieth will speak to the DCR grant and Ms. Anderson will speak to the CSO meeting on Wednesday night, which I have had two conversations with the town manager, Mr. Poole, as well as I know Attorney Heim, um, is also prepared to speak to this. So, instead of stealing their thunder, because they, they all the ones who've been doing the work on it, what I'd like to do is have, um, Gwen Spieth speak to the DCR grant, then Kristen Anderson speak to Wednesday night's meeting. And then, if I could through you, Mr. Chair, ask Attorney Heim to give sort of the town manager, town council, um, update on that. And then we can wrap it up on any questions, if that's okay?
Great, yes.
So, um, if we could promote Ms. Spieth and Ms. Anderson and start off with Ms. Spieth?
Hello. Um, hi. Sorry, this is my first time at select board. Um, so, pardon me if I'm a bit nervous. I'm just gonna read my, um, present, my three-minute presentation. And then you can ask me questions if necessary. Um, my name's Gwendolyn Spieth. I live just over the Elway Brook in North Cambridge. I lived in East Arlington for many years and have recently been working with Save the Elway Brook to try to stop the discharging of sewage into the Brook. Um, I care about the Elway because I walk there most evenings, but also as an issue of justice, given the danger of flooding, particularly for residents of my old neighborhood in East Arlington. Thank you, Chair Diggins, select board members, town manager and town council, for giving me a chance to tell you about an opportunity that has arisen to work with the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation through their matching grants program. Um, the program, as you may know, allows local groups and communities to request that DCR make improvements in DCR-managed properties in those local communities. Um, I submitted an application on behalf of Save the Elway Brook to work with DCR to address issues of water quality, stormwater management and flood prevention along the Elway Brook. And we were excited to hear that DCR had chosen our application to move forward to the final stage, uh, during which DCR representatives will help us lay out the specifics of the project, including budgeting, acquiring permits, et cetera. Um, the part of our application that DCR selected was our request to update the 2003 Elway Master Plan, which you may also know is an ambitious description of many projects to address issues facing the Brook. Um, with renewed community interest in this area from abudders, commuters and neighbors like me enjoying this lovely urban green space, it's a perfect time to work with DCR to push for actual implementation of the improvements that have been envisioned, envisioned since 2003. DCR has offered to provide a two-to-one match if we can find $25,000 in seed money. That means if we can find $25,000, it would become $75,000, with which DCR believe that they can complete a survey of the entire area along the Brook. Um, performing an up-to-date survey would be an essential first step toward actual implementation of these sorely needed improvements. Some of the projects we hope to see completed, which having a new survey would facilitate, are revitalization of Arlington's cattail marsh, um, improving its capacity as a protective stormwater wetland and habitat for myriad bird species, um, repairing the crumbling walls by the cemetery between Henderson Bridge and Broadway, as well as the cantilevered sidewalk there, dredging the Brook to remove sediment and other materials that prevent the Brook from flowing and increase the risk of flooding, bank stabilization using native species to decrease flood risk and help manage stormwater, and many more ideas. But there is a lot of work that needs to be done. So, um, I'm here in the hopes that you might have some guidance as to where, where or whether this $25,000 seed money might be found. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spieth.
Thank you. And, um, I did have the same conversation with town manager Chapdeline and Poole. Um, there was a suggestion about the designated funds from Congresswoman Clark, the federal funds, but those are specifically earmarked. Um, and, um, I don't know if Attorney Heim, I don't want him to speak. Is there anything you want to add to that in terms of the Congresswoman Clark funds, as well as the funding the 25?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I don't think I want to speak to the Congresswoman Clark funds. I'm not familiar enough with the, um, specific restrictions then. But what I do want to say is that, to my understanding, and if Gwen's still on, the last time the Elway Master Plan, uh, was developed was, I think, in 2003 by the Metropolitan District Commission. So, um, you know, there, there may be some sources of funds that we might be able to identify either within town or, uh, sources that we may be able to identify outside of town that could help, um, with a specific kind of, uh, project. But, um, I think a little bit further digging has to be done to figure out whether or not the, and I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with exactly what you and, uh, the manager talked about, but what would it would have to be done in order to, uh, use those types of funds for this purpose. So, I'm not ruling that out. I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the parameters of that to speak intelligently on it, Mrs. Mahan. Uh, but I, I would be prepared at the board's direction to, uh, investigate further alongside, of course, the manager, in terms of what we could do, um, to either support an application for funds, um, or to identify funds ourselves. So, I mean, these are, um, I'm not, I'm also not 100% sure if, if Gwen wants to speak to who might, who they were thinking about performing this study? Was, has that been made clear at all?
The way these matching grants work, it's DCR work. So, they manage the funds and they do the contracting and so forth. Um, so it would be DCR work, um, with input from the community partner, that, the organization, the town, whoever is partnering with them.
Okay.
And I would add to that, we can't apply the federal funds that the Congresswoman has secured, because those are specifically delineated for the Emilio Dearhart, um, study and remediation, which also will help the Brook as well as, um, the waterway further on down. But, um, when I spoke with, uh, Mr. Chapdeline, um, regarding, the idea came up, uh, 25,000 coming from planning, or, um, he had one or two other ideas that I don't want to go on the record with. And I passed that on to Mr. Poole, um, because it's really, to me, 25,000's a lot of money, but it's really short change for a, a really good investment for something that has to be done. And we'll go in concert with everything else that we're doing. So, I'll stop there in case my colleagues have questions on this part.
Sure. Uh, Mrs. DeCourcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Spieth, for, for joining us tonight and for, for your work in, uh, working to, to secure the grant. Uh, it's a great job. And I appreciate the update here. Just a question on the timing for identifying the funds. What, what, um, when, when do the funds need to be identified or, or secured, to your knowledge?
Well, yes, to my knowledge. Um, I, there is an application deadline. So, we, we went through the first part of the process. We, our grant was chosen. And the next step is for us to meet with representatives from DCR in July. There is a July 14th deadline, but the woman who is, deals with, um, external partnerships explained, as you may know, that DCR is going through some changes and, um, that it's her deadline. So, it may not be super firm. But she has not yet stated such a date as to when the funds need to be. Obviously, it's, it, the sooner the better. But, um, we weren't, we have not yet been given a specific date.
Okay. And, and after July 1, certainly probably before the end of the year, I'm just thinking, this isn't something that could wait till next town meeting for an appropriation. This is something that we would need to identify, um, at the start of next fiscal year, it sounds like. So, that, that just informs us in terms of the sources, potential sources of funds. So, um, that's more for us to, to, to see where we look.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I'm sorry if that was unclear. Uh, we are planning, we will be meeting with them in Ju, in July at some point. They have yet to give us a date. Um, but, and this is for FY '23, obviously, matching grant from their, their fiscal year being July.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I want to thank Mrs. Mahan for the early request in terms of where the funds are coming from. But that, I've got a couple ideas, too, but we can talk about that with Mr. Poole and, and, uh, maybe at a future meeting. But thanks again. Sounds like a great idea, um, to, to do this. A great return on $25,000.
So, I see two hands up here. I have no idea which one went first. Okay, alright, so then Mr. One, alright.
Well, my first question is about timing. So, thank you, Mr. DeCourcy, and thank you for the presentation, the work on this. It's certainly exciting, after years of talking about this year, to hear some affirmative steps forward towards progress. I guess this question would be for Attorney Heim. As we work through sources of funding, is there some, either Save Elway Brook, or is there an entity that exists that can legally fundraise for funds like this?
So, um, that's a good question, Mr. Hurd. Uh, the, my understanding from reviewing the previous master plan, if you look at the implementation chapter, and Gwen, you've probably already done this, you'll see a number of private organizations that appear to have done fundraising on behalf of, um, on behalf of the, the plan and some of the projects they're under. Some of these organizations, uh, well, many of these organizations still exist. Some of them look like they may not, um, currently be active. So, yes, there are organizations that have a fundraising capacity. Uh, as folks know, the town doesn't generally have the ability to raise funds in quite the same way. It's a legal, um, restriction on the town. But there are also resources that we do have at our disposal, folks, particularly in the planning department, who are aware of potential grant funding sources. The real trick of this will be, are there grant sources out there that are gonna match up with this timeline? Are they gonna be able to move quickly enough? Um, but we do have a, a lot of folks, um, who are really well-versed in, uh, applying for different types of grants to try to funnel them through. So, obviously, like, for example, if we had had a little bit more of a lead time on this, and that's not a complaint, you know, we might have been able to identify, I'm not sure about CDBG, that might not be appropriate, but something along those lines. But usually those funding cycles start a little bit earlier. So, we'll have to see what we can do to, A, help identify, uh, grant sources. B, uh, a lot of the funding sources were, uh, what you're talking about, were able, uh, uh, nonprofits that were able to engage in fundraising. Um, the town does have a lot of interface, as members of the board know, uh, with, uh, different friends groups, from friends of the council on aging. Um, but I'm not currently aware of, I believe there was a Friends of the Elway Reservation. I'm not sure what their active status is now. And I apologize for that. I can check in on whether Friends of the Elway Reservation, who had been a part of the previous, um, master plan, is still an active organization.
I don't mean to try to kick it back, because I think $25,000 would be well-spent if we can find it within the town budget or within the town through grant status. Just, it seems like such an aggressive timeline that you never know. We, we do have very generous people in Arlington or in the area that if it could be a hybrid approach, where we try to see, work with some of these entities to publicize what it is that we're trying to accomplish, and then supplement it with town funds if we can. But, just an idea to, that's more direct. I mean, a gold fund me, the money comes in day of. So, if there is an entity that can legally solicit funds, then it's a good option to take a look at to at least get a portion of this.
Yeah, and so, I'm sorry, I lost my turn. In some ways, what we'd be looking for is something along the lines of Affordable Housing Trust, but for conservation-type projects. Unfortunately, we don't have a mechanism like that. So, but, but there, there are some potential things that we can think about. I'll continue to talk about it with the manager, um, as well as, um, uh, see what types of grants might be available, especially since we're talking about a relatively small scale.
Well, it is an aggressive, I mean, timeline, you know. So, um, Ms. Spieth, who, who's gonna design the study?
Um, this would be determined in the, in the next meeting with DCR. We would be, um, finalizing a description of the project. And, um, at that point, we would be, I mean, there, there are people who, um, there are staff who perform such work, presumably, but in consultation with us, um, and, and presumably experts in the town.
Alright. Because, I mean, it's, it's potentially a good study, but, I mean, it's all in the details, I mean, and so.
Absolutely. We would want to ensure that it was a survey that served the purpose of, of, um, preparing us for implementation of these projects.
Yeah, so, so I would hope.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd hope that we would at least get to see, I mean, what the, what they propose to do before, I mean, having to decide whether or not we're gonna fund it. So, we'll have the ability to see, right? It was not like we, it's not like we put the funds up and then the study's designed. And we, we get to see how the study's designed and then, and then decide whether to fund it?
Um, that, my understanding is that the point of the matching grant project is that it's not just, uh, sort of black box within DCR, but that it's an ongoing conversation with the partner and DCR, um, determining how the funds are deployed. That's my understanding.
I understand. I mean, because, I mean, it, it often goes both ways to me. I saw my colleague, like, shaking his head, like, no. Because a lot of times, I mean, you can't, you can't do the design until you have the funds, because doing the design is part of the funding. So, that's really what I was getting at there, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that may well be the case.
Yeah.
But my understanding is that this, the mechanism allows for participation and intervention from the partner, that that's the price, you know, that's part of what you get for, for the partner providing matching funds, is, you know, you get the ability to, to influence the project.
Yeah, and, and that, that's ideal. I mean, so that's great. That's good to hear, you know, and.
But I don't know about the timing. It's conceivable that they will say, we need the funds to.
Right.
Go forward with the creation of this survey.
Right. Right. So.
Well, we'll see where we can get it from. And I do know that David Morgan, our environmental planner, he has been very active, um, on behalf of the planning department, not only with Save the Elway, but he's gone down to this particular, um, part of land with DCR, all the way down to Arizona Terrace. Um, and he's been very involved and wants to be involved in this in some facet. So, but we'll see where it goes from there. So, if that's okay. And then go to the, segue into the second part?
Uh, well, just, just, I guess maybe one more general question. This is for, for folks here, I mean, uh, everyone here who's been around longer than I have, you know, uh, and, and Mr. Heim. So, I mean, is this the first time we've encountered something like this? I mean, like, like a need to fund, I mean, something on such a short-term basis? You know?
We've done matching grants before, um, with, with then-MDC, now DCR. Um, we've had friends groups that have, um, uh, also subsidized, uh, the amount. But unfortunately for East Arlington, it's really tapped out with the Mugar effort. Um, and you can only go to the citizens so many times. And where this would be, the town would have a role in it. And I know that David Morgan has been very active and would continue to be active on it. Um, and I, I don't mean to minimize it or maximize it, but for 25,000, you know, we've, we funded master plan studies, you know, for the town, for six figures. And, you know, um, this really is, um, 25's a lot of money, but it's, you know, Mr. Chapdeline saw no problem with.
Yeah, and.
So, I just don't want to keep, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not questioning the amount. It's more, more a matter of how do we generalize, I mean.
No, we've done this. We've been very creative on other things before.
Yeah, you know, so, so, I mean, I'd like to think there's a, a mechanism for handling this kind of request. And if there isn't, then let's think about how we put a mechanism in place. Because we're gonna get this again, you know, and so, so there'd be some criteria by which we evaluate. And then, if it's not us, then maybe FinCom or some other entity, I mean, and that they have a reserve of funds, I mean, I mean, to be kind of budget that out, I mean, in-town meeting going, well, who knows what's gonna happen? I mean, but we have this amount, I mean, and then based on the requests that come in, and when they come in, we allocate out. And so.
Yeah, Mr. Diggs, I mean, from my perspective, I, I think I concur with Mrs. Mahan, that we've certainly had things that don't fit into our grant or budget cycles in the past. The question is just, you know, in the details, how do you get from point A to point B? And that's what we've got to figure out, is, given the timeline that we have, how do we get from point A, from, uh, from point A to point B? how do we get from point A to point B? It's not going to be the way we would do a CPA project, because the timing doesn't fit up with it. But I think that, as Mrs. Mahan is suggesting, I think there are other tools at our disposal that we'll have to examine. I don't know that it's easy to have, like, a standing grant application type of situation. I don't, there's not an appropriation for that ordinarily. But as some folks have suggested, there are other financial mechanisms that we should be looking at, especially where we're talking about a matching grant, and the state is willing to pony up a certain amount of money to achieve a certain result, so.
Yeah, all right, that's it for me. So, thank you. So, Ms. Anderson, or Ms. Spees, anything else you want to add? Or Mr. Helms? I'm getting signals here, so, okay.
Nope, that's fine. If you want to go to the second part. With Ms. Anderson speaking about the CSO meeting, June 29th. I've had conversations with the chair, forwarded to my colleagues the information, had conversations with town manager Chaplaine, now town manager Poehler, as well as Attorney Hime. But if I could turn it over to Ms. Anderson, just to.
Hi, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Diggins, Select Board, Town Manager, and Town Council, from hearing from Save the L-Wife Brook this evening. Gwen and I are here with Save the L-Wife Brook co-founder David White, and we want to invite everyone to a very important public Zoom meeting on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. The great cities of Somerville and Cambridge and the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority are starting to plan new sewer improvements that affect the L-Wife Brook. Wednesday night's meeting is the first of very few public opportunities to weigh in on their new plans to make improvements to the L-Wife sewage problem. As you know, last year, over 50 million gallons of untreated sewage pollution was dumped into our little L-Wife Brook. That is the same amount of sewage pollution that was discharged in 1994. This is a terrible situation. I want everybody to keep in mind that Cambridge has really done some great work to make improvements over the years. However, Somerville's Tannery Brook combined sewer outfall is awful and out of compliance with the law. And we think that the biggest problem in the L-Wife is the MWRA sewer system. It needs major upgrades. The reason that it is so important for folks to come out to this meeting is that the EPA wants to hear from the public. They want to hear from all of us, and the MWRA isn't going to spend the money required unless the public demands it. So please come out to the meeting. I know that people are busy and there's other stuff going on. So if you can't make it, maybe consider writing a letter to the EPA, Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. And this, if I could, at this point, when we've been discussing the CSO issue in L-Wife Brook with Mr. Chaplaine and now Mr. Poehler, and Attorney Hime, I will say, two previous meetings, Mr. Chaplaine and Attorney Hime have been attending, and this is another example of one of the meetings where we definitely need somebody from the town. I mean, I'll be Zooming in, but I was wondering if I could turn it over to a, someone from the town to make a statement, because part of the reason why I think this has been sort of exciting and evolving and happening is because we have Save the L-Wife Brook, we have Arlington's Conservation Commission, but we also have the partnership with the Select Board and town officials, and that's really helped with the EPA, as well as getting the attention of definitely Cambridge, who's always been a partner and willing to do something. And Somerville, for years, Mayor Curtis Stone was, in my opinion, a total waste of time, wouldn't listen to it. But we have a new mayor and a new representative who is receptive to that. But I'm assuming that somebody from the town will be there to make a statement on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I just want to highlight that I think we're all talking about the same thing. This is basically a combined sewer overflow control plan update. So it's essentially the involved municipalities in MWRA coming back to sort of provide an update on what they've been, how they're thinking about the long-term control plan. You're on the same page on that, correct, Ms. Anderson?
I mean, my understanding is that it's a public meeting, and I know the EPA wants to hear from the public. And one of the things that we want to get out of this meeting, in fact, is to encourage the sewage polluters to listen to the public and to make the public a partner in the new plan. That's one thing that we're looking for. Another thing that we're looking for is, we are hoping that they will incorporate climate change projections in their plan design. Yeah, so I, we plan on speaking, and I think that.
I didn't mean to confuse things. I just meant that this is a joint publicly posted meeting, presented by both Cambridge and Somerville. It is going to be a public meeting. I just want to be clear on what the scope is. It's been talked a little bit about as like a hearing. It's a public meeting to get an update on a long-term control plan. And in those meetings, one of the things that's been very valuable is to hear from people in the public, to have some feedback from other folks, including some technical folks, about whether this plan is satisfactory now. One thing that this board has made very clear is that it's extremely concerned about these overflows and outfalls. And the manager and other folks on the government side of things share a lot of the concerns of Save the L-Wife Brook, as well as some of the responses to the proposals that MWRA has sort of started with. So it'll be important to have a continued public presence. My deputy town council, Mike Cunningham, will be there, representing the legal department for this meeting. After this meeting, I think it would be helpful, Mrs. Mahan and other Select Board members have talked about wanting to develop a written position to provide some feedback, even if it's preliminary to the formal hearing stage, that codifies some of the perspective that Mrs. Anderson is sharing with us with respect to making sure that the modeling is updated to reflect the impact of climate change, with respect to taking a more aggressive posture, with respect to the water quality. For folks who aren't as familiar with this issue, essentially what Mrs. Anderson is referencing is that as there are extreme events, the outfalls into the L-Wife Brook affect the water quality. This all ties into both a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection permitting, as well as a larger EPA permitting scheme. So the EPA's role is sort of concurrent with Mass DEP to enforce essentially water quality standards and the NIPD's permitting. So I don't want to go into too technical of a sort of analysis of it, but I think one of the things that would be helpful is to both have a presence at that meeting from the legal department's standpoint, to represent the town and anybody else who obviously wants to join, but also to get the sense from the public feedback and the many organizations that are interested and have been providing commentary during these public meetings, to distill that into something that might be a written statement from this body, as well as potentially from the Conservation Commission, the town manager, about our concurrence and agreement with certain principles with respect to the standard which we want to hold this long-term control plan to. So there's a lot of, obviously, moving parts to the CSO's issues, but does that satisfy, Ms. Mahan? All right, thank you.
I will try to attend, and I think, I mean, it's Zoom, you know, so I'll be able to take that from work, you know. But it seems like you're all set with the talking, and so, I'll be happy to have a presence. Because what I really would like to get out of this is learning more about it. I've read, and there's a, I guess, a draft plan that came out, and I read that, and that was pretty informative. But I still feel that there's a lot more learning to do on my part before I can really speak in a competent and confident way, you know. So I will do my best to be there, you know, so. So I take it, I mean, this is just a discussion, we don't need to vote or anything out of this. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Anderson, and thank you, Ms. Spees, you know, this has been helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support, everybody.
Yeah, well, and town meeting, voted for a resolution too, right?
Yep, that's right.
Following through on that, you know, well, thank you. So, moving on, item 13, discussion and vote, MBTA bus stop consolidation on Park Ave, Mr. Amstutz? And I guess we have Ms. Anderson, senior transportation planner, Bonzu from MBTA, Olivia Mobayad, MBTA, Natalie Refal, McMahon Associates, and Sandra Clary, McMahon Associates.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to share my screen? So I think your guys already have our presentation, PPT, in front of your guys.
Sure, and Ms. Meyer will take care of that, he needs to.
You should have permission.
Okay, let me share my screen first.
So everyone's in? Okay, so, I guess maybe, so, Mr. Amstutz, who's going to lead this off? Is it you or?
Yeah, myself will do the, and our design consultant will be do the stump design concept.
Okay. Yes, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, so I think you guys can see PPT right now, right? Okay, so, good evening, chairs and the Select Board members. My name is Binzu, a project manager from MBTA. So today, we're very happy to be here with our design consultant, McMahon Associates, to introduce our PADI project that we will plan to do in the town of Arlington for the Park Ave and Watu City Ave bus stop change. Next slide. So the purpose of the plan for the accessible transit infrastructure project is to create the ADA compliant bus stop in system-wide for our customer who have a different mobility needed and improve the customer safety. I think since track to the 1990, all municipality and agency are required to improve, upgrade the pedestrian infrastructure to meet the ADA compliance. So that's disability advocate brought also to MBTA, to request MBTA to comply the mass transit across our whole systems. That's why improved bus stop system-wide is part of that agreement. The bus stop in Arlington Park Ave and Watu City Ave has been prioritized for the design in this year due to the one or more major access barrier, as well as relating needed. So there are some bus stop potentially changed or need to improve that relate to the bus road, 62, Route 76, and Route 78, in order to make accessible accessibility improvement and operation improvement. The bus stop improvement scope will be include the improvement to the sidewalk, creation of crosswalk, ADA compliant curb ramps, and sign, bus signs, stops. The MBTA will submit the proposed plans to town of Arlington for review and approval during the design process. When we have final approval from the Arlington, and then our on-call contractor will be to the construction work as soon as possible. So we estimate around the $800,000 investment in the town of Arlington for design and the constructions. The MBTA is found by the First State Bond and Federal Transit Agency to perform this money. The third, the third slide, I think, is showing the timeline. We have a design and public outreach process since 2020. You can see in this chart, our design has always communicated with the voters and the public, and fully consider the view of comments of the public on town of Arlington. Last year, December, we have a public meeting to do the, regarding the Park Ave, to introduce our plans and proposals. So we hope, you know, our bus stop improvement project can bring the transportation accessibility and safety to our community members and our customers. The fourth space, I want to turn it over to our, to Oliver Mobayad, our senior transportation planner from MBTA, to introduce the service planning related to the service bus road that we plan to make a bus stop improvement. So Olivia, it's your turn.
Sure, thank you, Ben, and hello, everyone, good evening. So just an overview of the bus service within the specific area that we're referring to this evening. We have, depending on how you slice it, three to four routes that serve this area. The first of which is Route 62, which serves from the Bedford BA to L-Wife, weekdays during peaks or rush hours, AM and PM. The 76 runs at the same times, and from L-Wife goes to MIT Lincoln Laboratory. The combined Route 62 and 76 runs weekday, midday, and evening, and Saturday as a combined route that serves Lincoln Laboratory and Bedford BA from L-Wife. And the Route 78 connects Vermont Village to Harvard Station seven days a week. I will note, I'm sure many of you all have been looped into the bus network redesign process that's going on. In our current draft proposed network, we are not proposing any changes to the way that buses navigate throughout this area. There are changes in terms of service levels. We're proposing the Route 62 run seven days a week instead of just six days a week. The 76 would be peak-only on weekdays, and the 62, 76 would not run. Instead, they would be the separate routes instead at all times. And the 78 would have some potential scheduling changes as well. I'll hand it back over to Ben.
Thanks, Olivia. So next one, we want to invite the McMahon's consultant, then consultant, Natalie, to give us some more details about the proposed change. So Natalia, so it's your turn.
Hi, hello, everyone. So yeah, I'm going to give an overview of the changes. So you can see all of the changes to the bus stop locations proposed in this area. In the image on the left, that shows stops that would be improved in green, stops with no change in yellow, new stop locations in dark blue, and then removed stops in red. And so the image on the right shows the overall future stop network with only the stops that would remain as part of this plan. And so, running through the changes north to south, you can see the stop pair at Park Ave and Wallaston are both improved. The single stop at Park Ave at Appleton is removed. The Park Ave and Florence Ave stop pair would both be improved. Park and Oakland are maintained in place with no change. And then at Park Circle, there's a few things going on. The Park Ave at Prospect Street stop is being removed where it is today and relocated to further south to Park Ave at Park Circle. The Park Circle and Park Ave stop within the circle is removed. And the Park Ave at Park Circle stop that serves the outbound routes on Park Ave is improved. It's in green behind the red stop. And then the Park Circle at Eastern Ave stop is maintained in place. Then we have the stop pairs at Wachusett Ave and Hillside Ave removed. The Park Ave and Wachusett Ave stops removed. And then, as you go to the southernmost section, Park Ave at Cedar inbound stays in place and is improved. But the outbound stop, Park Ave at Cedar, is relocated further south to Glenburn, and that's ultimately consolidated with the West Service Road and Park Ave stop, which is removed where it is today, and would be, essentially those two stops are combined into one stop at Glenburn. And then lastly, the East Service Road stop is improved where it is today. So overall, that totals seven improved stops, six removed stops, and three stops consolidated into two new stops. So we can go to the next slide. So looking ahead at our schedule and next steps, after today, we would proceed into 30% design plans from July to September. And then after that, between November and February 2023, we'd be looking at 100% design, looking at 2023 as the construction year for these stops, assuming about one to two. looking at 2023 as the construction year for these stops, assuming about one to two weeks per location.
Thanks, Natalie. So I think that's it. So this is our plan proposal. So any questions we would like to answer?
Thank you. And so I'll turn to my colleagues. Mr. Corsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank, thank you for the presentation tonight. Just to comment before the questions, and Mr. Amstutz had made reference to the Pleasant Street project in his memorandum to us. And we approved that on June 9, 2021. And to my understanding, those bus stops have never been changed. So that was done over a year ago. So I'm concerned about the timing of these projects because that was a night that we put it on the agenda. We had some public opinion that we received, some criticism that we received, but we were told that that was a project that should be done quickly and it still hasn't happened. So I, I can ask offline, but I, I am concerned when I see the timing here. That was a project that was going to be done in June of 2021 and completed in the fall of 2021 and it's still not, still not done. This is a longer time period because there's more improvements. But I, I'm concerned when we talk about these changes and you ask us to vote for these changes, could you tell us how solid these estimates are on, on, on timing going forward?
Yes, I think, Sandra, could you ask other questions?
Sure, I can respond to that. And so I was there for the select board vote on it last go round and the, the plan was to advance it to 100% design. Unfortunately, encouraged some significant design challenges, including encroachments and that would incur requiring easement license agreements. So they just got extremely complex as we advanced through the, the design. So Daniel and Wayne Chinard and others of the town would test the fact that we have advanced design, unfortunately not at the, the speed we had anticipated, but the hope is that they will still make it in this construction season. We're finalizing the design, a revised 100% design currently. And so this is the schedule that you see here is contingent upon the, the board vote tonight. Then it takes, you know, a little bit of time for us to mobilize. We need to do some survey and then we'd advance to design. So all going smoothly, and this is a realistic schedule that we would expect to advance design. We also rely heavily on the town's review in a timely manner. We know everybody has got a lot going on, so sometimes the, the review isn't as timely as we have hoped. So that's another determining factor in the schedule.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And just a question on the proposed changes and one in particular on the outbound stop that's being proposed at Park Ave and Park Circle, that looks like it's right across the street from the fire station as opposed to the stop now that is a little bit further up at the, at the edge of the circle. And I'm wondering, are there, are there sidewalk improvements being planned there? Because there's no sidewalk there. There's a bike path there and it, it just feels like that's going to be a real challenge for people getting off the bus, where they, where they would walk and maybe crossing the street, whereas the existing stop there, again, which is on the edge of the circle, the, the current cutout with the, the 78 used to terminate there, that has a sidewalk. And, and I'm just wondering what, what specific improvements are being planned for that Park Circle stop because it seems like a tough location.
I can start to answer that. All right, so you're referring to the stop, the inbound Park Circle stop that's on Park Ave?
No, I, I, I'm looking at the stop.
In dark blue on the map?
Southbound and northbound. So I think you're adding stops or proposing to add stops on both sides of Park Ave. So I'm, I'm looking at the future stop network and the new stop location that's right on Park Ave, right next to the water tower.
Yep. So as part of the stop improvement, there would be sidewalk improvements that connect that stop to the crosswalk that goes directly into Park Circle.
All right, because that, that might require, I don't know if that's even our property there and whether it's that, that the water tower and what's, what's going to be improved there. But I'd ask, as you go along, I guess we'll have that opportunity to review it, but it's, it's just in looking at that recently, it looks like a tough spot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corsey.
No, I was just, I might be reading this wrong, but I see that new stop on the fire station side of Mass Ave. If it's on.
Yeah, to clarify, it is on the same side as the fire station.
Okay, I, I, I was looking at Mr. Amstutz's memo where I thought on the outbound side too, there was, there was a stop there.
But the outbound stop is remaining on the little triangular parcel there that's just kind of to the north of the circle.
Okay, all right.
So can we clear the stop next to the fire department would be served by Route 76 inbound and outbound since it circles around there? That might be part of the confusion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mahan?
I have all the different routes, current and proposed in front of me. So I'm going to try to be as coherent as possible. And I know a lot, a name core part of this is ADA compliance and pedestrian safety. So I have to say, I'm, I'm really dismayed and would like to advocate for or find out why. When I look at Route 84 and I look at our bus number 84, bus number 78, if I look at the current configuration and then I looked at the proposed configuration, if you're someone who is able bodied or who is disabled in some way, you, under this plan, are pretty much abandoned, whereas you weren't before by the 84 and the 78 with, you have a big gap of no service between Wachusett Ave and Prospect Ave. For the 84, you're eliminating two, four, five stops and you can't get it again until Park Ave and Cedar Ave. So if you, if you're on the 84 and you're not 100% able bodied, you either can get on at Wachusett Ave and Prospect or Park Ave at Cedar Ave. Am I correct for bus number 84?
No, this is correct. To be clear, we don't currently run Route 84. It's been suspended, I believe, due to COVID for at least over 18 months.
Okay, all right, so it's included.
And that is not part of the proposed bus network redesign network either.
Okay, then I'll ignore that since it's in there. Same question for the bus 78. Is that still running? And it's the same thing of, it's quite a distance between Wachusett, Prospect, and Park Ave, Cedar.
So the routing of the 78 is a little tricky because it goes up Park Ave, it goes around the circle, and then it backtracks on Park Ave and heads down Wachusett Ave. So it doesn't exactly make a straight shot. It has that, that service on those stops around the circle as well. But in that proposed plan, you are correct in noticing that there is a gap that is on our larger end of our preferred scale within that area.
So why is it not stopping the 78 at Wachusett, Hillside, and Wachusett Park?
So there were several considerations. Sorry, what was that?
And can that be some, can one or both of those somehow be incorporated or is this, this is it?
At this point, this is our proposed plan. There were several considerations that went into identifying the stop improvements or removals. One of the main ones was configurations of the roadway and safety considerations in terms of just the roadway configuration and the intersection of Park Ave and Wachusett is difficult to make those stops accessible and provide a safe crossing across Park Ave. So that was a main reason to move that pair. And then low ridership, you know, these stops, many of the stops removed here seeing less than 10 riders a day. And so it was a combination of factors, including roadway safety, pedestrian conditions, ridership, stop spacing, and proximity to land uses that went into identifying this stop plan.
Okay, and I guess I have a feeling I, you all might not have an answer to this question, but I, I'll probably speak to it on the new business. But what, was it taken into consideration, the ginormous amount of assessment that the town of Arlington pays to the T, 3.1 million, whereas, you know, Lexington pays 750,000, Braintree pays, pays 842,000? And, and the reason I say that is I understand what you're saying about low ridership and it has to be something that makes sense and hits a number. But where our assessment rate is so high and people say to us, why is it that high? What are we getting for that money? Can that play into any of the decisions in terms of it may be low ridership for the T, but where we're paying beyond top dollar under our MBTA assessment? Was that taken into consideration or can that be in order to add a few more stops?
Can jump in. Assessment was not a determining factor in it, no. You know, we're, we're really looking to improve service reliability, accessibility, factoring in access to the stop, trying to improve trip times, addressing ADA accessibility. So all the determining factors that Natalie had previously mentioned are really the driving factors. It, it really doesn't come down to the, the capital or the, the funding investment.
Okay, no, that's fine. It just seems kind of a contradictory in terms of we're doing this especially for ADA compliance, but we're, we're telling people the spots where you're going to be able to have a ramp and, and get to the bus in this particular stretch, you've got a long way to travel to get to the two. So I'm, I'm just trying to do my best to advocate, but it sounds like nothing's going to change, so I'll leave it at that, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a resident that lives right there and would be most inconvenience on this board by the removal of those stops, I'd say, I mean, one thing to consider is that this is, this looks all well and good on a flat map on an iPad, but this is a very hilly area. And I live at Renfrew and Hillside, so about one block down from the removal of the Wachusett and Hillside stops. And on this map, I could just walk down Renfrew to Cedar and Hillside. But that's a pretty steep drop. My street goes straight down. Unfortunately, when the kids drive their bikes down, they disappear over the crest. So, I mean, it is impracticality if you go out there, it can be a burden on people to remove those stops. I'm on board with Hillside and Wachusett, I mean, sorry, Park Ave and Wachusett because I think that intersection with the island in the middle is a little bit of a nightmare as it is with adding the bus stop creates some confusion. I mean, to the extent that there is any sort of leeway on this, I mean, I see a fair amount of people that use the Wachusett and Hillside stops. A lot of people you, that I see use this bus line. Many people drop the kids off from school and go up to Wachusett and Florence, but I do see in the morning, a lot of people at the Wachusett and Hillside. And it's a flat road and it's a pretty easy stretch. There's good visibility. So if someone's there, you stop. If no one's there, you keep going and it keeps, it can keep the bus on pat, on, on pace. So from what I can see and based on just living right here, I would say that if, if there's any leeway, like Mrs. Mahan said, maybe there's not, I think the Wachusett and Hillside stops are used. And if you go uphillside this way, I mean, you're going straight up a hill. So if people live here to get to this, any of the other stops can be difficult. And there are, I know at least two or three residents I see going up and down these, this area in wheelchairs, whether or not they use the bus, I don't know, but certainly won't have the bus accessible for them. So I would take a look at those stops. The rest of them seem to make sense to me, but yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Hurd. Anyone else? Mr. Helms?
I may be respond just to the last comment.
Yes, please do. Please do.
Would the board consider removing the Oakland Ave stops instead of the Hillside stops? Would that be more palatable?
Could you repeat that, please?
Would the board be receptive to consider removing the Oakland Ave stops instead of the Hillside stops on Wachusett?
I think, sorry.
No, please, please, I mean, I'm, I'm referring to you all who live in the area more, yeah.
It's hard to, because it becomes a different ball of wax, but it's a straight run from Florence to Hillside. So I think it's better. And a lot of people actually, I mean, a good amount of people get on, I would think the ridership at Wachusett and Florence is pretty high because people drop their kids off, like I said, and, and jump on the bus right from there. I guess my thing with that particular street again is that it's straight and flat. And if the bus sees people, it stops. If it doesn't, it doesn't have to stop and it can just move along. But I think it's preferable, i- if it was one or the other, then I would say leave it at Hillside and Wachusett and take out Oakland. But I mean, yeah, I guess I'll see what the board has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Mahan?
Either to the representatives or Mr. Amstutz or Attorney Hyman, can the board just, if a majority agreed as part of our vote to put, to not eliminate anything and to put the bus stop back at, not at Park Ave and Cedar? Let that one go away, but can we put it back in or will the representatives from the consultants? I'm, I agree with Mr. Hurd on the, the island there, and I think that's, is that Park Ave and Cedar?
That's Park Ave and Wachusett.
Park Ave and Wachusett. I understand that one. That one is confusing in the morning, especially in the winter and it's a hill. But I'd like to, instead of saying, you know, switch it out for something else, if we can just add that other one back in, which is.
Hillside and Wachusett.
Wachusett and Hillside. Is that something we can do or is that something the consultants would be willing to do and recommend?
Yeah, I think, I think we can address it, so.
Was that answered? We just didn't hear you clearly?
Yeah, I think, I think we can address what you say have and here have. So we will be to sound the, we can back to the, our, we can do research and back to our, you know, the, the town of transportation engineer.
Okay, I think what you're saying is you, you've certainly heard the feedback from this board and that you're going to take that into consideration and then come back with the feedback and recommendation on that. Okay, so I, I would strongly hopefully anticipate seeing that particular one bus stop be included back in. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Ms. Helms?
I'd like to add my support to that. I think I trust my local topographical expert. And I, and I also agree that, because I live very near there as well, that Park Ave and Wachusett Avenue is a safety nightmare. I've experienced it myself trying to get on the bus and almost got run over trying to race it. So I'd rather not, I'm glad to remove that enticement to cross busy traffic during rush hour. I also do want to say, so yeah, so I would, I would make the same request to the, to the team, to the consultants to consider putting back Wachusett and Hillside before we vote on this. I do want to express my appreciation, however, to the receptivity to public feedback in retaining Park Ave and Oakland and particularly Park Circle and Eastern Avenue in response to a couple residents who are both my neighbors who have disabilities and really need that Park Circle and Eastern Avenue stop. So thank you for your responsiveness to that already. I was looking for that tonight and was very pleased to see that, that those made it back into the plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hurd?
I was also going to say. I was also going to say, thank you. As I read through the comments, it seemed like a lot of the comments were addressed and the plan reflected what the public comments came in. I did notice one said, why were there no pub, town officials there? So I guess we'll have to go to the next, make sure a couple of us are at the next public outreach meeting, but.
Huh, that's interesting. Yeah, I thought I was at that meeting, you know, so anyways, you know, anyways, yeah, I think you did a good job with, especially with the survey, you know, and I read through a lot of the comments, not all of them, you know, I will say there was one comment in particular that I liked on question number five, and it was, oh, never mind, I'm scrolling at the wrong place. So, a few questions, you know, so the removal of the stops as planned, I mean, how much, how much time would it have reduced to trip time?
I can answer that one if you'd like. The standard that we use, again, it typically varies based on multitude of factors, including congestion and stoplights versus stop signs and ridership, but the standard assumption is with one bus stop removed, the runtime of the bus is subtracted about 30 seconds. So when you think about everyone on the bus, that can add up to multiple minutes or even hours per day of time savings.
Gotcha, and thank you. And so, kind of along those same lines, you know, so how much does it increase the reliability of that service?
Again, it varies based upon the environment that we're working in, and of course, that's not the only factor when we look at doing something like in an elimination or consolidation. But the assumption is typically that reliability would increase.
Great. And with respect to, I mean, I understand that a lot of this is driven by Patty, you know, is, are there budget considerations that go into your, how you determine the number of stops, how you can improve on a given line?
There is no established budget per stop or line, no. The cost can vary quite substantially from like a small minor improvement to, you know, something much more elaborate that might include modification of the curb.
I understand.
But there's no predetermined cost per stop or per route or per municipality.
All right, well, that's good. That's good to know. So I appreciate that. So, all right, well, that's all I have, you know, in terms of just general questions. And I'm really going to defer to my colleagues, you know, on this, because you all know the routes and the stops much better than I do on this. I mean, so, so I'm going to turn to someone.
I'm like to.
If I, sorry, if I could. There, I don't know if it's an open meeting to the public, but there have been a few questions, if it is open. If not.
Was this noticed as a hearing, Mr. Chair?
No.
No.
No, it's just a discussion.
Not a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, you know, so, so yeah.
Perfect. I'll tell them to follow up.
Okay, great.
Or they can put it in the Q and A.
Yep, there are a couple of questions. Thank you.
I think what, I guess I'll be guided by the chair and Town Council that we, the Board approve the recommendations as presented in this memo with the caveat of also as represented by the consultants to reexamine and possibly reestablish the Wachusett and Hillside Ave stop. So, I would put that on as a starting motion, so that it's not, the motion is not contingent that that has to happen. It's a motion, what I understand is they need a motion from this Board to accept and approve these changes as recommended by, through the Planning Department, Mr. Amstutz, as well as the consultants, but also a caveat on there as part of the motion that this Board also, as part of its motion, will avail itself of the opportunity of the consultants having heard the concerns at Park, at Wachusett and Hillside about possible reestablishment of that bus stop, and we will receive feedback on that in the future. So, the main thrust of the motion is, A, to provide the approval they need to move forward, and B, just to add the fruits of the conversation we had about possibly adding that back and that the consultants and Mr. Amstutz will get back to us on that question.
Yeah.
Hope that's not too convoluted.
No, it makes sense. I mean, it will be a little challenging to repeat back, you know, but I got what it means, you know, so, you know, and a second from Mr. Hurd. So, so that's the motion. And second, more discussion?
For Ashley's sake, it's a move approval on the proposed changes applied, as well as a will report on the Board's recommendation, the Board's request for consideration and recommendation on reestablishing the Wachusett and Hillside Ave stop. Thank you.
Gotcha. So, I guess before we take the vote, I just want to ask Mr. Amstutz if he wanted to say anything or any comments.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I provided all the materials or as many, you know, backup materials as I felt was helpful for the Board in looking at this and making a decision. You know, we've been working with the T for many months on this, and I think partly because of the complexity of these changes, that if they had approved, if, if the 78 or Park Circle at Eastern Ave stop was eliminated, that means the 78 would not have gone around the circle, which, again, came in, came out of the public outreach and input that that was going to be a hardship for a number of people, especially a few people with certain disabilities. And so I will just agree or restate the appreciation for the T and their consultants McMahon in, you know, putting that one back on the table or as a stop, the Park Circle at Eastern Ave and also the one at Oakland Ave and Park Ave, certainly responding to the concerns from staff and also from the public about the loss of those, of those stops. Like, you know, I think in general, there was, the public didn't want any stops to be removed, but, you know, certain stops, as has been mentioned, either have some challenges with simply making accessible, or with the pedestrian or traffic safety of where they are, like the one at Wachusett and Park Ave. So, you know, those are much more difficult to be able to retain. So I think that, you know, I think what the proposal that came back was, you know, much improved from what we'd originally discussed several months ago.
Thank you, Samstutz. And once again, I mean, I thought your survey was great, you know, and I liked the way that you present all the data that you get from it, so very much appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Amstutz for the, for the memo, and I mentioned a reference he made. That was my misreading of his memo. His memo was right on the 62 and 76. I was reading inbound on the 62, 76, or the outbound map, as if it applied to everything. So, I don't want the, anybody to think that there was an error by Mr. Amstutz on the error, on the memo. It was my interpretation of it. So, thank you and for the work that you have done in keeping us informed. I'll just say very briefly, Mr. Hurd is the current knowledge on, on these bus routes. I have the institutional knowledge on this, having grown up in the Heights and been a frequent rider of now the old Route 84, the Almont bus from Almont to Harvard Square. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. So I guess you were, almost threw him under the bus, but you threw him there and then you got out there and you stopped the bus.
Well, I, I felt like I didn't want to leave it out there. It's all right here.
Great, all right. Excellent, so, okay. So on a motion to approve of the proposal, but to leave ourselves open to the possibility of some change, you know, on the Wachusett and Hillside stop by Mrs. Mahan, and second by Mr. Hurd, you know, Mr. Hyman?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis, vote.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Item 14, presentation on the Age and Dementia Friendly Action Plan with Christine Shaw, from the Arlington Council of Aging, and Caitlin Coyle, from the UMass Center for Social and Demographic Research in Aging.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having the Council on Aging on the agenda tonight, and thank you for your attention to this agenda item. My name's Christine Shaw. I know most of you, but I'm the Executive Director of the Council on Aging, and we're here tonight, it's a pretty momentous occasion. We're here to share our Age and Dementia Friendly Action Plan with you. I want to thank the Council on Aging Board members that are on the Zoom virtually supporting us, and also all of the COA staff and everybody that's helped us get to this point with the Age and Dementia Friendly Action Plan. It's been a labor of love and a long road. It began over five years ago, when our Board of Volunteers began researching and applying to be considered as an AARP age-friendly community. In 2017, AARP did designate Arlington as an age-friendly community, which was wonderful. In 2018, we had a kickoff luncheon and we began an age-friendly survey for the community. Over, over the years after that, which included a pandemic, as we all know, we really just continued taking more information from the public. And then when we got to the point where we were ready to write our action plan, we hired Caitlin Coyle, who is here tonight. She's a research fellow at the Center for Social and Demographic Research in Aging at UMass Boston. They, I believe, were really the experts in age-friendly and in the action plan writing and interpreting the data that we had collected. She recommended at that point that we hold some additional focus groups since it was now post or during the COVID pandemic. It was different times than when we had originally began getting the information from the Arlington residents for the plan. So, I am happy tonight to have Caitlin here with us. She has a brief presentation to outline the Age and Dementia Friendly Action Plan, and what we're really hoping for is the Select Board's support in moving forward so that we can file this with the AARP and the Dementia Friendly Massachusetts, and then just keep pressing forward in all of the age-friendly and dementia-friendly work in Arlington.
Okay, thank you.
Caitlin is on.
Yes, good evening. For some reason, my camera is not being detected by Zoom, so I will not be using my camera, but I will share my screen so that I can share with you some highlights from the work that we've been doing in Arlington. Okay, great. So, thank you, Christine, for the introduction. Caitlin Coyle, I'm a research faculty at UMass Boston in Gerontology. We have been around since 2012 and have worked directly with over 70 cities and towns in Massachusetts, doing very similar projects to this in terms of helping communities collect information from their older residents and developing plans for ensuring that their communities are conducive to people aging, not just well, but also actively and engaged. So, I wanted to just really thank Christine, who's been just a great leader on the town side in terms of supporting the work and engaging her council members, the Arlington Seniors Association and the volunteers. So it was really wonderful to work with her. And I'm going to just sort of remind us all what an age-friendly community is, and Christine alluded to the AARP process by which a community becomes age-friendly, but the whole sort of thing started by the World Health Organization in 2002, recognizing population aging and a desire for people to age in their community, gathered experts from around the world and sort of asked them to put forth recommendations for what would, what would it take for a community to be an age-friendly place? And the way they define that is a place that optimizes not just opportunities for health and participation and security, but to also ensure that the ability to achieve quality of life and have dignity as people age, as well as what constitutes an age-friendly community. And so they came up with these sort of eight different domains of an age-friendly community, which guides the work that's happening in communities all around the world, including Arlington, to sort of take a look at their community as it relates to each of these domains, understand what their strengths are, and identify places where they can do better, and put together action plans, like the one that we developed for the town of Arlington, to guide residents, volunteers, and stakeholders to take action, to move things forward. You'll notice on this flower image that a number of these domains are very broad and they don't, you know, Transportation, Housing, you know, Communication and Information, it's not specific, there are all things that are important to all residents, I should say. So the rationale for an age-friendly community is really about supporting people as they age, but it also, there's a lot of value in these kinds of initiatives for the town at large. Christine mentioned, they're also pursuing the dementia-friendly designation, which is, goes hand in hand with age-friendly and is really, as they're making their plans and as they're putting the plans into action, it's not just thinking about aging broadly, but also recognizing that people who are living with cognitive change and their families have, may have a very different experience than those without cognitive change happening. And so really wanting to put a focus on their age-friendly initiative to also think about how, how are the, how are the changes that we're making also conducive in response to people living with dementia and those who care for them? So this is just a definition of dementia-friendly from the Dementia Friendly Massachusetts. I should say also that in 2018, Governor Baker declared Massachusetts an age-friendly state and actually applied for designation for the state, encouraging all cities and towns to do this work. And so, and there's also this Dementia Friendly Massachusetts, which is a statewide initiative to support dementia-friendly communities. So, just another sort of kudos to Arlington for, and Christine and her, and her group for pursuing this and for getting this far, because it is something that's being recognized statewide as important. I'll go ahead and skip that. So Christine also mentioned the timeline, which is that they have been accepted into these networks. They conducted the needs assessment and then they reached out to us in 2021 to really sort of take all the information that they had already gathered, engage some additional folks, and put together an action plan that will be delivered to AARP, which will then kickstart an implementation process, which is essentially just sort of a signal to AARP that you've got this plan and that you're also actually taking action on that plan. So we did review the 2019 survey that Christine and her group conducted. We reviewed a number of documents that the town had recently completed that might have intersected with some things like housing, transportation, outdoor spaces. We conducted a demographic profile using American Community Survey data. And then, as Christine alluded to, we did engage in five sort of working planning sessions with stakeholders and residents that was specifically focused on the five areas that you see listed here, wanting to really engage them in this process because in order for this to be successful, there needs to be people who, who are, take some ownership over it and are involved in coming up with the ideas. And so we were lucky to facilitate these in person. We ended up with about 32 people overall who participated, as I mentioned, residents and stakeholders alike, who basically came up with a laundry list of ideas for action that was then refined into the plan that you all received and that we completed. I have a couple of demographic slides that, you know, essentially just referencing the fact that adults 60-plus in Arlington outnumber residents under age 18. They make up almost a quarter of your population currently, and that projections that we have available to us from MIPC and UMass, the UMass Donahue Institute, suggest that, that the trends in terms of the size of the older adult population in Arlington will continue to grow. in terms of the size of the older adult population in Arlington will continue to grow looking out to 2030 and 2035. So these are just four different projections that take into account different assumptions, but the trend overall is an upward trajectory. This is in part because we know people are living longer, but also because they'd like to stay in their community as long as they can. And a couple of, you know, I wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, there's a lot of diversity within the older adult population that makes it important to recognize about Arlington. So twenty-nine percent of residents age sixty-five and older live alone, which sort of signals what kinds of things they might need to have available to them in order to remain living independently and comfortably as they get older. A number of residents age sixty-five and older reportedly having at least one disability. So here, this is the sixty-five-plus population. You've got about twenty-four percent who have at least one disability. Those are sort of physical mobility limitations and things of that nature. And so it's not just about, it's definitely not a homogeneous group by any stretch of the imagination, and that it comes, thinking about these kinds of things is important as we think about designing a community that is inclusive to people of all ages and abilities. And then lastly, this is looking at median household income by age. So essentially, you've got six percent of residents who are age forty-five to sixty-four, living on under $25,000 a year compared to twenty-four percent of your older adults in Arlington. Not entirely surprising, given that many older adults are living on a fixed income, but as we know, costs continue to rise, and that puts people at a real risk for economic insecurity as they're wanting to stay in the community as they age. So I wanted, I'm not going to go into a lot of the recommendations specifically, but I wanted to just sort of give some highlights and really also just reiterate to the board and to the community that this action plan is by no means prescriptive, and it's intended to be a guiding document. Christine is lucky to have, Arlington is lucky to have such a great group of resident volunteers and staff and stakeholders who were involved in these conversations. And it was very clear to us that there is a lot already going on in Arlington, and that part of this work is to try to harness some of what's going on, communicate about it, make sure that older adults are part of those conversations. And so I wanted to just sort of iterate that this document will be used by the groups that Christine is leading to think about where can they affect change as it relates to age and dementia friendliness. So it's not like a checklist. They don't have to complete everything that's in the plan. It's really a set of ideas that came directly from community resident input. And so it's intended to be a guiding document, a living document, something that can be used for planning and generating ideas for the future. So the plan that you received, you know, it goes through each of the domains, highlights sort of what's the overarching goal that we're trying to accomplish, and then lays out a number of specific action items that are both, I would say, small and large in nature. The idea is that there are some little things that can be done now, and there's many larger things that require advocacy and planning. But really, it's about rethink, as Arlington plans for the future, having a group like the one that Christine is leading, but also the town more broadly, really understanding that as we plan, we have to think about it from the aging lens. It's important to think about how the changes that we're making impact people who are on fixed incomes, who have mobility challenges, who may be relatively isolated to family, this kind of thing that we know occurs more prevalently in old age. So it is really, as I said, a pretty comprehensive plan, this transportation and mobility, again, number of goals, specific action items. And the idea is that the groups of residents and stakeholders who've been involved, as well as others that will become involved, will help facilitate progress towards some of these goals and actions. You'll also note that any item that has a purple D next to it is for the dementia-friendly piece, and it's a specific way to delineate our progress towards dementia friendliness as well. So this plan, in theory, will be submitted to AARP, will be sort of on file with them, and then they'll support the town and Christine and her folks as they move through the age-friendly action process. So that is essentially it from me, but I wanted to, yeah, share this, commend Christine, and just really the wonderful, the wonderful residents. We do this work a lot, and we go into communities of all kinds. And it was very clear to me that Arlington not only has a lot going on from a townwide perspective, but the folks who were at the table, who were engaged in these conversations, were very dedicated, very thoughtful, very motivated to continue the work. So I think, you guys, Christine has set up for success in terms of being able to move this work forward. And lastly, you know, just recognizing that the whole point of age and dementia-friendly work is to engage the community in taking action. And so it's not a measure, you know, success is not measured by how many things you get done. It's really about having the conversation of raising awareness about aging in the community and working together towards, you know, more inclusive practices. So thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments if there are any.
Well, thank you very much. Excellent presentation, Aina. And so, and do you have a preference for how we address you, Ms. Mrs. Doctor?
No, you can call me Caitlin. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, Caitlin. Thank you. So I open it up to my colleagues. Mr. Helmoth.
First, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, a question. Do, this might be from Ms. Shaw through you. Would it be a motion for receipt or approval be necessary? Is this, what's the desired action here?
I think we need to make a motion to approve the, is it?
Action plan.
Action plan for the dementia friendly.
I'm just trying to, you know, try to get the right verb here. Mr. Heim, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think adoption or approval, either one is fine.
Because they want to get it to AARP.
Yeah, yeah, excellent. So I would happily move adoption. And thank you, thank you, Ms. Shaw, for your excellent leadership. By the way, it's been great to see you recently out in a couple of community events, so I appreciate your visibility there and representing the town so very well. And thank you, Caitlin, for this excellent plan, this excellent report. I thought that the demographics were particularly striking and attention-getting, that we need to see where we're headed with the population. And seeing that I'm only three years from what is considered an older adult, to my alarm. But, you know, that's the reality. That's all of us. And I do want to make Arlington my home, and I think that a lot of people do as we age in place. And the income demographics are particularly striking. We have a lot of work to do, particularly with respect to housing, to really grapple with this, because if we don't, I think that we're going, it's going to be much more difficult for many of the people who live here and love living here to stay here. So I think this is, these are some important guideposts, and I hope that as we look at our zoning, and we look at our affordable housing, and we look at our transportation options, that we take this to heart for this population. Thank you.
Mr. Helmoth, anyone else? Mr. Hurd?
I'll second the motion. I just also want to thank all of you for the participation in this and all the work that's been, this document, I mean, the amount of hours that it takes to put together a document like this, I don't even want to comprehend. But it's, seeing the goals in front of us and the action items, it really helps us as we create policy to see areas that we need to work on, there's certain action items that we can say, all right, we're already working on this, this, and this, but it looks like we're a little, we're a little light on these particular items. So this is very helpful for us in a community like Arlington, where we've asked often and will ask very soon our seniors to help fund some of, a lot of programs that are geared towards either youth or our schools and whatnot. And we talk about overrides and de-exclusions. It is important for us to make sure that we are giving back to the same population that has supported, certainly my children, the children of Arlington, and make sure that they have everything they need in life to be happy and strong and healthy. So this is very encouraging to see this, and I look forward to the implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank Caitlin. I want to thank Ms. Shaw for the excellent presentation tonight and all the work that has been done to date. I attended a number of the Council on Aging meetings, and this has been a topic that has come up. So I also want to thank members of the Council on Aging, who I think have signed on through Zoom and have watched for all, for all their work. And seeing what they have done through the meetings I've attended, it's truly impressive. And I do want to say, really impressed with the breadth of the action plan between housing and transportation, but just social and communication issues that are so important, whether it's for caregivers, whether it's the need for home safety assessments that are in there. Because to Mr. Helmoth's point, ninety percent of the survey respondents said that they would like to age in place in Arlington. So there is going to be a need for that, and then the communications and partnerships. And I really like the way this is so well thought out, and just the work you did on the report through the document review, there's four or five plans that we adopt here, whether it's sustainable transportation, master plan, housing production plan, those were all considered. Sometimes we think we're just approving things to put it out there, and it's all separate, but it really was incorporated into your review, into your recommendation. So thank you for that and for all the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Well, I think this is really, a really great action plan, Aina. And although you say we don't have to do them all, I like to see us try to do them all, because they all really do seem very worthy of pursuit. I mean, I like the one on developing a database, I mean, of email addresses for everyone. I think it was over fifty-five. I mean, the zoning changes was an interesting one, I mean, especially the affordable housing overlay. It'll come down to how we define affordable, you know. But I think there's a lot of interest in the community. We're doing something along those lines, and the snow removal recommendation I thought was very good. And the resident parking stickers, I mean, that might be something for the folks working on parking on this board to think about. So, yes, thank you for a great list of, I think, actionable action items. So I, yeah, I'm thrilled, and looking forward to incorporating this into the catalog of action plans that we have. So with that, I think we'll take a vote. Well, actually, on a motion, we need to approve this action plan by Mr. Helmoth, and a second by Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis, vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for the support.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. All righty. So nice little segue into the overnight permit parking pilot forum that we had last Thursday. So I'll just start by saying that it was, it was a really good forum, Aina. Mr. Helmoth was there, and I think he will agree that there was a nice turnout. I think over eighty people registered for it, and I think I saw maybe mid-fifties at any given time there. And it was mostly us listening to the residents. They asked a few questions, and we made it very clear to them very soon that this is ground floor. And so we weren't coming to them with a plan. We were really listening to concerns, that we did want to, we were seriously thinking about changing things, you know, the way we approached parking. And so it wasn't really a matter of whether we do it, it really mattered how we do it, and we were looking at to them for input. It was hard, I would say it's kind of evenly balanced. I wasn't really, like, doing a survey, because the whole point is not really to get a vote. It is really a matter of determining how best to move forward. But it was pretty evenly split, I would say, in terms of people who supported doing it, you know, versus those who were more towards keeping the status quo. And I guess if I had to say, it tipped one way, it probably tipped more towards, I mean, us doing something. But there were some strong feelings there that were voiced, I thought, just very civilly, you know. So it was a, it was a good forum. It ran a little long. I think we were there for a hundred and five minutes instead of ninety, you know. So got a lot of good ideas from the forum itself. And I sent you all the link to the comments. So we've got a lot there still, is that I need to process a whole bunch of it, and believe it or not, since I'm not going anywhere for the July Fourth weekend, I'm looking forward to catching up and putting some things together, you know, and coming up with something to present to Mr. Corsi first, you know, and then the rest of you maybe in July. That's a little ambitious, may end up being August, you know. But certainly, I think we want to go back to residents with something, I mean, by October at the latest. The only thing that makes me not say September is that, you know, we're going to have that town day thing, you know, and that may start taking up a lot of time and bandwidth, you know, in August and September. So with that, I'll turn to Mr. Corsi to add more.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coordinating the forum. And Chief Flaherty attended, Officer Reteau attended, and I think that the chair, it was exactly right on the description. There were differing views, but it was, I thought it was a great discussion that took place. And, you know, whether you agreed or disagreed with what people were saying, they provided us a lot to think about, and just in terms of the scope of what you and I ultimately will be requesting of the board on a full vote. But it was really interesting, you know, sometimes there's a lot of detail that was provided that were general concerns, but I thought all the comments were helpful. And it just, again, the last time we talked about this pilot, we talked about the more you look into it, the more you realize how many facets there are to it. And that's what we need to think about. I will confess, I will not be processing anything over the July Fourth weekend on the pilot program, but I will get back to it later in July. And I want to thank the public for attending and feedback that I've received since that night as well, which has been helpful.
Great. So, questions?
Yeah. Just a further comment on the quality of the civic discourse. I thought, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. De Corsi for organizing the forum. I thought it was excellent. I noticed that many people there thanked you for listening, for the board, to the board for listening. And I think it was a real, that was very much, people felt very much heard. I listened, even though I wasn't participating as a board member, and I heard a lot. I was just very struck by, it seemed to me that people, even those who disagree with each other, were listening to one another. And they would reference each other, and they were appreciating kind of the nuance and the complexity of another person's point of view. In my mind, that is a model of how civic discourse could happen. I'd personally like to see more of that in town meeting. I thought it was a really good example of how it can be done, when people just listen to each other's stories respectfully. So it was a good evening for me, and I'm very glad that we had it.
Well, thank you. Thank you. So with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, and I need to pull that one up. It's the liaisons assignments. So we're just going to run down this list. And I think, I think there are going to be very few changes. But I just want to make sure that people are happy with where they are. If they want to change something, then now's the time to say it. But it's not the only time. So if you want to say something later on, we can certainly revisit this. So I take it, Mr. Helmoth's going to want to stay with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Okay. Mr. Hurd with the Committee on Tourism and Economic Development. And Mr. Helmoth on Youth, Health, and Safety. Okay. Mr. Hurd on Battle Road Twenty-Five. All right. Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Hurd on CDBG. Okay. Mr. De Corsi on Council on Aging. And so my understanding is that Mr. Helmoth is now doing Clean Energy Future.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, yep. No, I discussed that one, the chairman.
And HPEC. I'll stay with it, although I don't know if he's staying with me. You know, so now that we have a new housing production plan, there haven't been any meetings scheduled. So I'll keep it, but it may open up a little bit of bandwidth for me. And Information Technology Advisory Committee?
It's been inactive, but, you know.
Okay.
If it comes back, that'd be fine.
And Local Emergency Planning Committee, Mr. Helms and Mr. Corsi?
Okay.
Okay. And Long Range Planning. And so I have spoken with Mrs. Mahan about this. And so my burning curiosity about what's going on there, especially when I was running and I could attend the meetings, makes me want to participate. And also, there is going to be a big challenge, meaning so I think I might want to, to the extent I feel comfortable, meaning want to input on this, but Mrs. Mahan will back me up, meaning that if it turns out that I just can't handle that meeting at that time. I'm an early riser, you know, but sometimes, I mean, one day leads to another day that doesn't really allow for an o'clock meeting. So we'll see how it goes. But Mr. Corsi will stay. Thank you. And Marijuana Study Committee, that's me. And once again, I think it might have run its course, now that we have three licenses. So I've seen more bandwidth opening up for me. Parking Invitation Governance Committee, Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I'll stay on that. I mean, we can just update the name if it's Park Advisory Committee.
Okay. Oh, it's now, it's now the Parking Advisory, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not sure what the Parking Subcommittee is. Mr. De Corsi might know more than me, but whatever it is, we don't meet off this.
All right.
Maybe you should meet over the July 4th week.
So Rainbow Commission. So I talked to Mr. Hurd, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Helms, first time. I thought I was going to make it through a whole meeting, you know.
Be happy to do it too.
Yeah, so now that we're going through this again and seeing that I have less, we had agreed that we kind of tag team on it, we could still do that if you like, but I'm happy to keep it.
I'd be happy if you would, or if I remember, just I've got my name on a lot of things here and I just want to be careful not to overcommit.
Sure.
I'd be very happy to stand in if you are not available.
Sure, 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 sure. You know, I'll have to, they'll be disappointed because I kind of told them that, but they'll...
I think you're very well served by your continued liaison and I will be happy to be there if I can be.
Sure. So School Committee Liaison, Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Okay. And Scholarship Working Program, Mr. Hurd and Mr. Corsi? All right. What's that?
It's been a little quiet. I'm really well continuing. Even on the July 4th project, we need to clean up this list of committees.
Yeah, all right, okay, well, that's true.
For somebody, somebody.
All right. You know, Snow and Ice. Mrs. Mahan, yeah, right.
It snows.
There's ice.
There's ice, you know.
That's on my report.
Yeah, well, you could maybe like help out with, on the action plan, like getting businesses to get that stuff out of the way, so that not only seniors, but just anyone can like walk down some of the sidewalks. Sunnyside Avenue Neighbors.
That hasn't been in a while.
Okay, so we can...
Hasn't been active, but you can just leave it there in case DCR heats up again with David Morgan out of planning, because I know he's been down there a lot recently.
All right. You know, so TAC. So Mr. Hurd, you know, I'm on there representing the Chamber of Commerce and you're on there representing the Board. Would you like to swap?
So I was going to just, by swap you mean you just take over the...
The Select Board, yeah.
Well, I was going to, because I said, I mean, I think I've been the TAC liaison since I've been on the Board and I've never been invited or asked to go to a TAC meeting. And I think you are much more involved in TAC than me, so I'm happy to give that up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. And if we did swap, you get a vote, because I get to vote as the liaison from the Chamber of Commerce, but I think from the Chair, from the Select Board, you don't get to vote. So think about it, you know. Okay, so then we'll swap me in and then you'll...
I'll sit here.
Yeah, all right. Tree Committee, Mr. Helms?
Tree Committee?
I don't know.
Yeah, sure, I'll take the Tree Committee.
All right. So Mr. Hurd will take the Tree Committee. Cool. And Youth and Advisory Board, that no longer exists, but it's going to be replaced by the Young Arlington Collaborative. And so I would like to do that, you know. And Remote Participation Study Committee? And, you're going to hate me for this, thinking about even adding one, but I noticed that ABAC doesn't have a liaison. I mean, the Bicycle Advisory Committee, was that intentional or just...
Well, usually there's a liaison from the Board when either Town Meeting or the actual committee creates a position for someone from the Board.
Right.
So I don't think ABAC has done that.
All right.
Or you might want to follow up with them and find out if that's something that they'd like to include.
Well, I can look and...
And if they say yeah, then you can...
And see, okay, all right.
Your Chair, you can do whatever you want.
Well, what I want to do is check in with folks and make sure that it's okay, that I'm just doing stuff, you know, like a loose cannon. So, all right, so I think we're all done here.
Cool.
All right. So the last, the next, okay, there are three more items, but they're all short. Goal Setting Meeting. So I think if we want to have Mr. Poole there, and if we want to have a meeting in July and want Mr. Poole there, it would probably be Tuesday or Thursday. And Thursday would work better for me than Tuesdays. You know, I guess, Mr. Hurd?
I don't know if Mr. Poole already communicated this, but Mr. Poole is out July 21st to 29th, so it would have to be a different week than that.
Well, it is important to have Mr. Poole.
Right, right. So our next meeting is on the 18th. I mean, we could try to have it before then or we could do it in August.
I just wondered, Mr. Chairman, if, maybe we pick a couple of dates, but I mean, there's a fair amount of work Mr. Poole needs to do to update the goals document for us. So I mean, if that works for him, fine, I don't know if, I know that timeframe towards the end of the month doesn't, but I don't know if we pick a date in July or August and see what he thinks he can produce before that day, unless you know if he feels that the time is fine for him.
Yeah, I have not spoken with him about it, so with the understanding that he would need to do more work, then maybe we'll aim for early August. Assuming folks are going to be around, because I know August is when people tend to head out, you know. Any reservations?
August is the first week of August, it's fine for me.
First week of August?
And I don't know my schedule yet, but I will in a week or so. I plan to do a fair bit of travel in August. I could tentatively put some on.
All right, all right. And maybe, so he's through the 29th, so that's pretty much the end of July. Okay, all right, well, as soon as you know, please let me know.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, sorry about that.
And then, well, no, no need to apologize to me. And maybe I can have a talk with the Town Manager and see if he could pull something off, I mean, before he leaves in July. All right. So you may be seeing some emails from Ashley, meaning as we firm this up, you know. So, okay. And the item 18, Correspondence Received, Town Manager and Director of Planning and Community Development Positions for Mr. Wagner, and Request for Memorial for Nancy, I'm sorry.
Orton.
Orton, thank you, by Callie Martin.
I'll move the receipt of 18 and move receipt and referral of 19 to the Public Memorials Committee.
Second.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Yes.
Since we're making a referral to Public Memorials Committee, I might remind us all that we have another pending referral to follow up on them, the matter of Mr. Schlichtman's original warrant article proposal that was converted to a referral by the committee about Malachi Way. So be a good time to follow up with them just to, you know, make sure that's on their radar as well.
Okay.
So we did send it to them. And I don't know if it actually happened, but that was, I believe that was a...
All right. You know, so I was wondering about that too. I was wondering if Mr. Schlichtman had to come back to us with it, but...
Yeah, he asked me about it recently and I said to follow up and I forgot to mention it, so I thought it was at least marginally related to this.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
But you were mentioning it since we were making a referral.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Yes, Mrs. Mahan?
And I heard from Town Meeting, and maybe you can follow up on this, and I just want to make sure we're proceeding appropriately, as we all do. Some people were questioning if the suggested memoriam was the ideal one. So would it be, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic or anything, but like, some people said, oh, it'll be funny that it's a small little thing and both signs bump into each other, but then other people said, no, if you want to do a public memoriam, you know. So do you want to find out or do you know? I got a sense from Town Meeting that they wanted to refer the matter to the Public Memorial Committee for consideration of some memorial versus the two signs that are going to butt each other in that one way. Or am I, do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion, Mrs. Mahan. I'll go back and look at the tape.
I don't want to not refer it, but I know...
Yeah, I think we should be clear, we're asking the committee to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me kind of withdraw that and for some further research, because I think it's a really good point.
Yeah, I just want to, you know...
Just so we have some clarity.
And I have no...
Yeah, 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 no, I think it's...
Whatever the phrase is that I'm trying to think of.
Yeah, yeah, no, gotcha, gotcha.
I don't know what it's called, we're just saying.
Yes, we're good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your tolerance.
Oh, no, no, no problem.
Let up the rails there for a bit.
No, no, no problem. I haven't quite formulated the thoughts I have about the Public Memorials Committee, and so I'm just, I'm, yeah. My word that I use a lot, I mean, I'm intensely curious about that committee, you know, what it does, because we refer a lot of things, and then, then what, you know? So just kind of want to know what happens and when and how. So I lost track.
We need to vote.
Yeah, no, so I think Mr. Hurd did the motion. It's seconded by Mrs. Mahan. And, Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes. All right, new business. Mrs. Meyer?
No, no business, thank you.
Just one minor thing for the Board's future attention. Myself and Deputy Town Counsel Cunningham are getting prepared to go to a mediation or a court-guided arbitration, not arbitration, I'm sorry, basically a settlement conference regarding the Eintrah matter. That's coming up in mid-July. We'll probably have some kind of update in advance of the Select Board's July meeting, but we may want to post an executive session on that matter if the Board is interested in the outcome. The Board is, well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. First, a week ago Saturday, the Chair and I attended the reopening of the Reservoir Beach and it was truly impressive. It was a little chilly that day, but there was a good crowd, people actually swimming, which I was surprised at. But I drove by there this weekend and there was a really good crowd there. So I wanted to thank Joe Connolly for all the work that he's done, Park and Recreation Commission and the Conservation Commission, who had a very big role in the improvements there. And it really is impressive between the park and the beach itself, they brought in sand from Cape Cod, and they have a picnic area, it's really, I think it's going to get a lot of use this summer, I think that's great. The other thing is, and we didn't have an opportunity to say anything to her because she hasn't been before us in a while, but Andrea Nicolai, this week is her last week with the Town, she's the Library Director and she's going to head up the Albany Library System, which is a much bigger system, but she did a wonderful job as our Library Director and increased circulation, did a lot of innovative things during the pandemic, and just want to wish her well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I guess I just have one new business, because I think my other new business, I've spoken one time to one colleague on any one matter. I mean, that has to do with the MBTA. There are quite a few cities and towns that have been taking votes, registering their City Council or Select Boards, just dismay for the reduction and/or elimination of bus services that the T is proposing. And that's separate and, you know, Jermaine to Newton and Lexington and Belmont and that. But I have gotten from quite a few people about Arlington, because, you know, there's two bus routes being eliminated, the 80, and I don't have it all in front of me. And everything else is getting reduced, as well as, this has been a longstanding issue and I'd like to put it on the table to maybe actually tackle it, you know, we can discuss it at our Goals Meeting, but unfortunately, from machinations from many, many years ago, Arlington really got, in my opinion, a truly unfair MBTA assessment. And it was just politics way back when. And again, looking at our operating budget and a pending override of 23, 24, and trying to look at everything we can, I would like to, and I've spoken to the Town Manager, Mr. Poole, about this. He's the person who provided me the four or five assessments that I asked. Went on each individual community's cherry sheet to see what it was. And I'd like to, in the spirit of everything that's happening right now, I think we might be able to get some leeway, but Arlington, this year, our assessment is $3,093,000 and change. And all we have are buses, and they're getting eliminated and reduced for that assessment. The Town of Lexington's assessment is $750,000, which is where I think we should be in terms of transportation. Arlington and Lexington pretty much have the same. We don't have any rail, we don't have any, you know, electric cars or anything like that. Now, if you look at Braintree, which is part of the reason our assessment is so high along with Quincy, and they have, you know, a T in there, train service and much more transportation, Braintree's assessment is $842,000 to our 3.1 million. And Quincy, which has everything in terms of services, soup to nuts, their assessment's at 2.1 million. And we're at 3.1. So that's woefully inadequate. So what I'd like to, what I've asked the Manager to do is to, and I didn't ask for tonight's meeting because I think it's too ambitious, it was just, you know, it's a lot of information. I did ask for these facts and figures because he told me it wouldn't be a cumbersome task to do, but to provide the Board with, I've gone to two of the hearings and I've seen different routes proposed, be eliminated, reduced, et cetera, but to provide the Board exactly what, you know, the Town of Arlington is losing, we're definitely not gaining anything. And then have the Board have a discussion, and I'd like to tackle this issue of this unfair assessment that the Town of Arlington has for the MBTA. I don't know if we can, I know there's hearings coming up in the State House within the next four weeks, maybe it's something, after a discussion from the Board, if there's an appetite for it, that how can we address our unfair reduction? One thing I was thinking was to propose either through the Board, through the Town, or through our legislative delegation, that Arlington actually get a true MBTA assessment for the amount of services that it's getting, which also, right now, is a decrease percentage of service loss. And/or we could ask our legislative delegation to file legislation to create a quick study. I'm not into studies, just to have a study and it puts something off, but this would be something that would be a comparative study regarding the assessment and formula, A, the initial, what Arlington should be, and B, what it should be, taking into account the loss of service to Arlington customers. So I just wanted to bring that up in the new business, just so everybody can start thinking about it and ruminating on it. You know, we really should be down, we should be paying definitely closer to what a Lexington's paying, which is pretty much what a Braintree's paying. You know, for us to be paying $3 million, 3.1 million, and, you know, Braintree pays $842 and Lexington pays $750. And all we have are buses that are getting reduced and eliminated. So if people can just start to think about that, I'd like to have a conversation. If nothing comes of it, then nothing comes of it, but I think, I know I'd like to have the conversation so we can say to people, because it's been getting thrown, you know, a lot of people, I don't even tell them the assessment part of it, because then they'll really go, pardon the pun, off to the third rail. But that's my new business. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, sure.
Thank you to my colleagues, I'm sorry, I know I ramble. Too much information.
You can put that on the agenda for the next meeting. You know, because, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. You know. Mr. Helms? See, I look at Mr. Hurd, and I need to say your name.
The real Mr. Hurd. He's seating in the.
You know what? I think it's Mr. Grayly having some fun with my three colleagues to the right. So thank you, Mr. Grayly. Go ahead.
So just, just a very brief item. As you know, I am the representative, the Select Board, to the Affordable Housing Trust, Board of Trustees, and three days remain for Arlington residents to fill out the Affordable Housing Survey, and I would encourage residents to do that. Just visit the town website and just search for Affordable Housing Survey. It'll come right up. This will help the trust fund, which is just getting started, develop, develop our action plan, which really will guide the first five years of how we make decisions about investing those resources. Community engagement's really important, particularly because the, the point of the survey is we're really hoping and working hard to hear from residents who are most likely to need or benefit from affordable housing, and are typically underrepresented in public meetings. So members of the planning staff and of the board trustees have been out pounding the pavement, literally on the sidewalk, at farmers' markets, with cards and whatnot, but I was asked and gladly, gladly assented to giving a plug for it tonight. So once again, please do take the Affordable Housing Survey before June, this Thursday, June 30th, when the survey closes, and that's at Arlington MA.gov, Arlington MA.gov, and then just search for Affordable Housing Survey. And I took the survey, because I'm a resident, I encourage all my colleagues to do so as well. I think it's really thoughtful, and you'll see kind of the, the kind of work that the Board of Trustees is putting into it.
It doesn't take long at all, and if you do it before the 30th, they won't have to extend it, and then you feel guilty about not doing it over the holiday weekend. You know, Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of brief things. I just want to give a nod to the organizers, both from the town and the vendors at the Beer Garden, because if anyone's gone past there in the past couple of weeks, it is jammed. So it's been a wild success. I think they found a home there at the Jason Russell House on the lawn there. And so if you haven't, check it out. It seems to be a hotspot. I've been busy with baseball, but that's wrapping up, so I can check it out. And then, at, at long last, I went to Leader Bank today and did not have to walk around construction fencing in Arlington Center. So if you go through Arlington Center, you can see the updated plaza with the new concrete, and the nice imprints of the bricks. And looks like we have a little, little work to do to put in some of the planters and whatnot, but there's a lot of space now, and a lot of ideas in my head for outdoor music, which is always what I wanted to see in Arlington Center, was a performance space, and I think we can figure that out with all the space that you see there now. So check it out. It's now, it makes Arlington Center much more appealing for the businesses there, so.
Yeah, I got, I passed there Saturday and got some pictures, you know, so, yeah. And it was like, kind of like, wow, I don't have to walk around, and it's kind, it's kind of cool. And then I figured that, get pictures while it's empty, because soon there are going to be tables and whatnot. And, you know, so, so, yeah, just three quick items, I mean, so, it was on June 12th that we did the Rainbow Commission? And so Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Helms were there, and, and, you know, I, I didn't mention this last time, because I just forgot, you know, but I'm, I partly for the fun of it, and partly because, I mean, just the thought of me listening to myself read 11 clauses of whereas made me bored, you know. I asked people to join in and read it, I mean, so I found like 11 people to read the whereas clauses, I mean, and, and the Select Board represented, I read the, be resolved. And it turned out to be a big hit, you know, so I thought it was fun, but people kind of like raved that, you know, they really liked that, and, and so I just put that out there, something to consider, you know, do it next time. And it just made it kind of like fun. It wasn't like I lined up people in advance, I mean, just like, see who's there, just ask them, you know, if they want to do it, and people pretty much came forward. So it can be as easy as that, you know. The other thing is that we're going to have a forum on community insurance, you know, by the Civic Innovation Group. I mean, this is breaking news, because it hasn't been posted yet, but the goal is to do it, and intent, strong intent is to do it on the 7th of July, Thursday, Thursday night. So Mr. Fisher's going to be heading that up. And finally, the Broadway Corridor Design Competition, I mean, has concluded. We have a winner. If you go to Bob Sprague's site, you can find out who that winner is. But if you don't know, I mean, then you'll see it on ACMI, or you can watch it on YouTube, and, and.
Is it you?
No, I wasn't, no. Was it a team?
Like a very coy answer.
If you really want to know. If you don't know, now you know.
Yeah, it makes, it makes good reality TV, though, you know. So this is, yeah, yeah, so the, the proposals were really quite nice, you know. So there's a high school, Arlington High had a team, and Winslow Associates Architects had a team, and, and MIT had a team, and there were some really good ideas that came out of it, which was the whole point of it, was to, because, I mean, we, I mean, the, the winning, the prize money was very token, you know, but, but anyways, so that's done. And Mrs. Thornton, I mean, she persevered, you know, got it done, and, and so, so that's it.
Motion adjourned.
All right, so motion adjourned by Mrs. Mahan, and a second by the Hurd.
The Hs.
The Hs, second by the Hs.
Hurd and Helms?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Chairman, Mr. Fo.